John D. See here?
I don't see him.
We're live on all our channels. I T checking on John D's camera. There we go.
There he is. I'm here.
And you must be in a different room.
I decided to make it a little more festive behind me tonight.
See you.
Thank you, ma'am. Hey, Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I've got a complaint.
Okay, no Snickers?
No water.
No water? Is there none in that fridge behind you?
Nah.
There's not? You want me to bring one up there?
No, not, no.
I have some in the refrigerator down here, and run one up real quick if you need it.
Next meeting, next meeting.
Okay.
Thank you.
Chuck Stewart's got some eggnog for you.
Is it natural for a preacher or is it spice for a sinner?
He got his bike for a sinner.
I can hear Snickers wrappers right now, John D. Alexander.
No, this oatmeal raisin cookie that Santa Claus bought me.
Bound to be something good.
Oatmeal raisin, my favorite. If any of y'all run across Santa Claus, tell him.
Ready to begin, Mr. Camp, if you are.
Okay. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. This is the City of Galton Council Committee Meeting for December the eighth year 2020. It'll be electronic meeting and before we start, I got, we gotta pass an ordinance or not an ordinance, but a resolution. Santa Governor leads executive orders number sixteen, thirty-four, fifty-one, sixty, and sixty-five. And the need to limit the community spread of COVID-19. The December eighth, two thousand twenty Galton Committee Meeting, Council Committee Meeting will be held by electronic means. The meeting would be live stream to, to, to protect the public health, safety and welfare of the council and citizens of Galton. You may join the Zoom meeting at the link shown on the screen or by dialing one four seven oh, two five oh, nine three five eight or, or one four seven oh, three eight one, two five two, two five five two. And enter the webinar address ID of eight nine one, six four one two, seven four two eight. I need a motion.
Most approved as the kind of meeting.
Wait, did you, John D., you second it?
Yes, sir.
All right, we have a motion second. We have a roll call vote, please, Connie.
You muted.
Vice Mayor Camp. Councilman Alexander.
Yes.
Councilman Fan.
Yeah.
Councilman Fennell.
Yes.
Councilman Hayes.
Yes.
Councilwoman Love.
Yes.
Councilman Overton.
Yes.
Seven I zero Nays.
Thank you, Connie. With that, we'll call the meeting to order. Roll call, please, Connie.
Vice Mayor Camp.
Present.
Councilman Alexander.
Present.
Councilman Fan.
Here.
Councilman Fennell.
Here.
Councilman Hayes.
Here.
Councilwoman Love.
Here.
And Councilman Overton.
Present.
We have a quorum.
You're moving on. We'll have an approval minutes for the October twenty-seventh, twenty-ten council work session and November tenth, twenty-twenty council work session.
Motion to approve both.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any corrections or, or adjustments to it? Seeing none, Connie, could do a roll call vote.
Vice Mayor Camp.
Hi.
Councilman Alexander.
Yes.
Councilman Fan.
Yeah.
Councilman Fennell.
Yes.
Councilman Hayes.
Yes.
Councilwoman Love.
Yes.
Councilman Overton.
Yes.
Seven I zero Nays.
Thank you. And then we'll move on to public recognition. Jeff Herschel will give you instructions on how to participate.
Thank you, sir. If you'd like to speak, please use the raise your hand function, which you'll find if you, if you're on a computer, you'll mouse over the bottom of the screen and you'll see that button appear. If you're using a cell phone, I don't see anyone that's on cell phone at this time. But if you join us, you will be able to hit star nine to raise your hand and then star six to unmute yourself. We do have a couple of people who've raised their hand. Let's start with Michelle and Pascal. Go ahead.
This is Michelle Juvance, thirteen thirty-five Long Hollow Pike. I would like to speak about the item that's on the agenda tonight. The expansion of the urban growth boundary. And before I speak about that, I actually have a statement that my friend Deborah Holmes sent me to read because she was not able to come to the meeting or participate in the meeting. And she asked me to read this for her. Please listen to this because her property is actually in that part of the outside of the city that is part of the urban growth boundary extension that you're wanting to expand to. So Deborah Holmes, twenty-one thirty-four Long Hollow Pike is her address. And she says, Jimmy and I would like to be on record that we oppose expanding Galton's urban growth boundary to include our property on Long Hollow Pike and Upper Station Camp Creek Road. In February's report, it was stated that based on the future population projections and the land needed to accommodate Galton's urban growth, there could be a twenty-two percent reduction in the size of current urban growth boundary to meet those needs. Why would an expanded urban growth boundary be needed? Seems a little unnecessary to us. Please vote no to expand to the Upper Station Camp Creek area. Thank you for your time. So that is Deborah's statement, and now I would like to make a few comments myself. I just wanted to remind you about the initial report from February because I agreed with that report that was put together. It was reasonable. It made sense. So I wanted to remind you in case you forgot what it said. I know that the report for tonight is completely different. But here is something that I wanted you to hear again. Based on future population projection and the amount of land needed to accommodate urban growth, including lands for residential, commercial, industrial, and recreation activities, a revised urban growth boundary is proposed. While the city and the surrounding area will continue to grow, new development will occur within the existing city limits and on specifically identified properties in close proximity to the city, particularly on properties that are serviced with central water and sewer systems and within a four-minute response time to existing and proposed fire stations. In most cases, properties identified as rural community in the twenty-twenty plan are not needed to meet the projected population for the next twenty years. Therefore, the city proposes to reduce the size of the urban growth boundary to promote a more compact urban growth pattern to allow for additional growth, preserve rural areas, including environmentally sensitive areas, and to control the cost of extending and maintaining public infrastructure and providing municipal services. The proposed U G B area will comprise forty thousand, six hundred and one point one acres or fifty-three point four four square miles, which is a twenty-two percent reduction in the size of the urban growth boundary. So in my opinion, I think it makes more sense to go with the initial recommendation from our planning department, from our professionals that we hire here to tell us what is the smart thing to do. I think it's financially smarter to do that, and that is my opinion. And I hope that you will change all of your, all of your minds about wanting to expand the urban growth boundary. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Renee Saunders, go ahead.
Hello, this is Renee Saunders. I hope you can hear me.
Yes.
I live at twenty ninety-two Rodman Boulevard. I'm not sure if this is the right time, so if it's not, please stop me. I wanted to give recognition to one of the police officers in the city.
Now is fine.
Okay, wonderful.
On work sessions, all comments, whether or not they're related to the agenda or at the front of the meeting, so you're entirely appropriate, and we love compliments.
Wonderful. I don't know if Chief Bandi is on the line right now. I'm driving, so I can't see everyone. But I wanted to, my son had a motor vehicle accident on Saturday. Everyone was fine. But when I arrived, of course, the, one of the officers in particular, I believe his name is Zumieta.
Zubia.
Okay, Zubia. He was interacting with my son. I had some questions about impairment and was nice enough to come back to my vehicle and ask me a few questions about my son, who has some speech impediment and making it difficult for him to, to communicate in a normal fashion. And often in making it appear as though he had a car wrecker on my son. And I think thereby alleviated the need to maybe arrest him or act in a way that may not have been appropriate. So I wanted to say to Chief Bandi, whatever you're doing with the police officers, keep doing it. And to Officer Zubia, thank you very much for the care and concern that you took at the accident scene with my son.
Yes, ma'am. I'm here, and I appreciate your, your time. You took the time to do that, and I'll make sure Officer Zubia is aware of it. Thank you again.
Thank you.
Thank you, man. We did have an additional caller. Just wanted to remind that person, if you wish to speak, hit star nine to raise your hand, and then we'll call on you to speak. I'll give you another couple of seconds. I'm gonna check my panelists, make sure we don't have anyone there. Okay, I think that's everyone.
Okay, thank you, Jeff. Close public recognition now. Move on to Mayor's comments.
Thank you. I just, all right, two things I'd like to mention this evening. One is the Galton Christmas Parade is happening this weekend. The Chamber is taking great precautions to make sure that everyone can participate in the parade safely. Certainly, there's a virtual option, and there's more than one place to view the acts, if you will, that are in the parade. So if you want all the details about the parade, you can go to the Galton Chamber website or their social media and learn all about the plans for the Christmas parade this Saturday. It does step off at noon. And I think it should be a great thing for everyone in the city, however they choose to participate. We are hoping that the rain holds off. Also, I want to mention this Saturday that West Eastland Church of Christ is doing a food giveaway, and it's a very large food giveaway. It's happening at the Galton Civic Center there in the upper parking lot, starts at eight A.M., and it is first come, first served, as long as supplies last. Finally, this could be our last meeting, supposed to be our last meeting. So I am going to ask you all about that later this evening, but if it's not, I just want to say Merry Christmas to all. And, and I think we're all hoping, praying, and counting on twenty-twenty-one being a better year for all of us. So thank you all for all that you've done this year, council and department heads and city employees. You all have been amazing, and I am so grateful for each of you.
Thank you, Mayor. We'll move on to the agenda now. Item number one, this order is oh, two zero one two dash five four, appropriating fifty-two thousand, two hundred and sixty-four dollars for use of benefits with City Galton. Mr. Tuttle.
Mayor Camp, this is Nick Tuttle, City Engineer. And we received, as you said, approximately fifty-two thousand dollars from the developer of Windsong. M A B is the name of the development group, and if you recall, they donated this money to the city to perform a watershed study. And so we're just needing to put that money into the account to spend it. We've got our consultant lined up to get the work done.
Most approved.
Send it to council.
Have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Any discussion? Mr. Tuttle, will all this money be used over in Hillwood Estates or anywhere and everywhere?
It is primarily focused on Hillwood Estates. It does, the watershed study does extend all the way up to Southwater and will include the watershed beyond Southwater on the east side of it. But we believe that most of the improvements or recommendations, fixes will be in Hillwood Estates all the way down to Town Creek.
Will this, will this help any on James Street?
Um, I, I don't know. I don't mind looking into that a little bit further and getting back to you after this. But I cannot remember. For some reason, I'm blanking on where James Street.
That's where Superior Metals is. Or no, it's not James Street. It's the next block up in there, where you get your gasoline. That's James Street, behind Superior Metal.
Oh, yes, sir. Actually, no. We, we won't be extending up that far with this study. I know where you're at now.
Yeah, okay. All right, thank you. Any other discussion? If I move to council, say aye. Well, you have to.
Vice Mayor Camp.
Hi.
Councilman Alexander.
Yes.
Councilman Fan.
Yeah.
Councilman Fennell.
Yes.
Councilman Hayes.
Yes.
Councilwoman Love.
Yes.
And Councilman Overton.
Yes.
Seven I zero Nays.
Thanks, Connie. Moving on to item number two. This is monthly financial reports for October. Ms. Nichols.
Yes, sir. In your packet are the financial reports for October. I'll be glad to answer any questions you may have. I did want to share that I did a comparison between the first four months of last year and the first four months of this year, which I'll know how our revenues are trending even with the COVID issues we're having. Through the end of October, property tax collections are up eighty-six thousand dollars this year over last year. Local option sales tax is up a hundred and eighty-six thousand over the same period last year. Other tax areas are up a hundred and twenty-two thousand. Our building related, which Chuck is constantly telling y'all is, is doing quite well. Our billing, building related revenues are up six hundred and twenty-five thousand from the same period last fiscal year. Our parks and recs unfortunately are down about two hundred and fifty-four thousand dollars. That's spread across Civic Center Golf Course and Parks due to a lot of our programs being canceled. Also, our court-related revenues, not just city court, but the revenues we get in from the county court as well. Those are down about sixty-nine thousand dollars. Overall, for the year, we are ahead of the same timeframe by two million, one hundred thousand dollars. That does include three big-ticket items that are kind of unusual. We had a sale of a piece of property that was four hundred and eighteen thousand. We received a little over a hundred thousand dollars from public entity partners for emergency relief funds that they gave out to all of their participating partners. And then, of course, the state CARES Act money of nine hundred and twenty-two thousand, which we included in the budget this year. That was the first round of state money that we received. But even if you eliminate those three big-ticket items that were somewhat unusual in nature, we're still six hundred and fifty-nine thousand dollars ahead of the October of twenty-twenty versus October of twenty-nineteen. So even with COVID, we're still trending well. Our stormwater revenues are up thirty-six thousand from first four months of last year, first four months of this year. And sanitation is up thirty-seven thousand for the first four months. So we continue to be solid with our revenue collections.
Great news, Rachel. Thanks.
Thank you, Rachel.
Thank you, Rachel.
Thank you.
Want to have a motion to send it on to council?
No, it's just a report.
Okay. I'll go along with that. I didn't know if we need to read it to council or not. All right, we'll move on to item number three. This is order is oh, two zero one two dash five three. I mean, in Article twelve supplementary, supplementary district regulations, section twelve point oh one, regulations applicable for all district regulations, sections twelve, point oh one, point oh two, oh fences, walls, hedges. Galton's own orders repealing conflict. Oh, wait, wait a minute. And ages on the Galton's own orders repealing, completing ordinance, provided for surveying, providing for effective date. Mr. McCord.
Bill, are you there?
Are you muted, Bill?
Bill's muted.
I'm here. I'm here. Can you hear me?
Well, you can hear me now.
Okay, great. I'm going to, can you see my screen?
Yes.
Okay, great. Okay, this first item, and by the way, congratulations, Councilman Camp. I think this might be your last council committee meeting.
I believe it is.
And you got to do the honors, so that's great, and congratulations, and I hope you enjoy retirement from council. This first item tonight is a request to amend the zoning code. And specifically, it amends Article twelve, section twelve oh one, oh two oh pertaining to fences and walls. The code was current, placed in effect back in nineteen ninety-eight and has been amended a little bit, but not significantly. The request is to change the fence regulations to not only require a formal permit and review by the building department for certain, all fences actually, but particularly the structural fences, and those are those that are greater than six feet in height. What we're also changing is to allow for fences greater than six feet in height in residential zoning districts, which abut commercial or industrial zoning districts, non-residential districts, to be constructed greater than six feet in height. But the problem there is that when they do that, they have to get a building permit and ensure that it's structurally sound and will meet wind load and things of that sort. So the big changes that we're proposing with this ordinance include, again, retaining much of the fence design requirements that we have now and clarifying that we would not allow for barbed wire fences, except in agricultural areas and for public institutions. And as we always have, we're requiring the finished side to face the out exterior property boundary, or you could have a finished side that faces both sides of the fence or the property. Any wall or fence that exceeds, again, up to seven to ten feet in height would require a structural permit, and it only would be allowed in those areas where a residentially, on the back of a residential lot, for example, where it's a but, a mixed-use zone property used for non-residential uses, commercial uses, or industrial uses.
Bill, is that, is ten feet the, the limit for that wall?
That, that's correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Be the maximum height of that. So the Planning Commission did review this, and there was extensive discussion. Chuck Stewart with the Building Department explained to the Planning Commission the reasons for the requirements for a building permit. One thing that we don't want to allow as well, we're placing in the ordinance, is that we wouldn't allow for a fence or wall that requires a structure element, structural element to it, to be constructed in any, any public utility and drainage easement. A six-foot fence that could be removed, such as a shadow box fence or stockade-type fence, could be built in those easements. But it's the responsibility of the property owner to remove those and replace them at their own expense and not at the expense of the utility company. So those are the main changes that we're proposing with this ordinance. It was reviewed and approved by the Planning Commission, and we're asking you to consider this. If you have any questions, I'll try to answer those.
Bill, the one time you addressed chain link fences and said you wanted all vinyl on them used to, is that still in there?
We did have a provision in there that we were going to require vinyl coated, or similar coated fences on all fences in the city. Currently, the code only allows or requires for a vinyl fence on all site plans or final master development plans, and that will remain as unchanged. So in final master development plans and site plans, it will be required, won't be required for residential areas.
Hey, Bill, question. You, did you say that this, this, the height restriction applies only if it backs up to commercial property?
If it's a residential lot that backs up to a commercial property, and that's an example I'll use, they can build a fence higher than six feet in height, but they will need to get a structural permit to be able to do so.
Okay, but then you couldn't do that in a residential area or anything like that, right?
Not, you can do a six-foot tall fence, but you couldn't do, if you back up to another residence and yeah, of our subdivisions are, you'd be limited to six feet.
Okay.
Hey, Ms. McCord, if you have a, a six-foot chain link fence and somebody want to put a aluminum fence up also, would, would the chain link fence have to come down or could they put it up next to it?
No, the chain link fence would not have to come down. Of course, we're assuming that it would be constructed on the person's property who owns the fence. So it's, and we have a few places here in town where there are fences that abut one another. So I don't know if the property owners don't get along with each other or what, but you would be able to put fences up against one another.
Okay.
Adjacent, parallel to one another, as close as, you know, just a few inches away.
Okay, but it had to be on the property, it had to be on the property on the side. Is that correct?
Yes, and our code requires the nice side of the fence to face out to the adjacent property.
Hey, Chuck Stewart, can I ask you a question?
Yes, sir.
I know Ms. Huntsman, this is part of the, this is part of the issue that we've got. And I know that she erected that large fence behind her property, which butts up to commercial. I know she hired
here.
Couldn't hear you, so.
Can y'all hear me now?
Yeah.
Yeah, we got you now.
I'm sorry. I'm just wondering if Ms. Vivian Huntsman, knowing that she built her fence without a building permit next to the commercial property, I know this is the catalyst for this discussion. My question to you is, has she already made changes and has this problem been resolved yet?
No, sir. We've heard nothing from that property.
No, sir, we've heard nothing from that property. I do know that an engineer went on site and took a look at it, and I got some of that data sent back to me, but there's been no permit pulled and to meet the requirements that the engineer placed on on the project is what's going to happen on that particular project.
Okay, you've answered my question. You guys still hear me?
Yeah.
Yes. Just three more questions. I need a motion to move it on to council. Do we have a motion to move it on to council?
Motion to send it on.
Got a motion. We have a second.
Second.
Give us a roll call vote, please, Connie, any discussion.
Vice Mayor Camp. Councilman Alexander.
Yes.
Councilman Fan.
Yes.
Councilman Fennell.
Yes.
Councilman Hayes.
Yes.
Councilwoman Love. Yes. And Councilman Overton.
Yes.
Seven I zero Nays.
Thank you, Connie. We'll move on to item number four. This is a presentation of executive summary for amendment to the Galtin Urban Growth Boundary. Mr. McCord again.
Okay, yes, so you can still hear me, hopefully?
Yes.
Great, okay. This next item is a discussion about the urban growth boundary amendment. This has been in the works for some time, not only in Galatin, but in other cities in Sumner County. And back in March, we had a little presentation where we discussed the urban growth boundary and some of the issues that we would want wanted to address. And there was some evaluation of our current growth boundary and some discussion about that. And in a nutshell, what the city council decided is that they wanted to take in a portion of property, which is, you know, let me pull the map up here. Can you see that map?
Yeah.
Okay, and so currently, let me explain this map. I guess it's what I should do first. The current map, this is a partial map of the city and the surrounding areas. And the area outlined in the red line is the current growth boundary. The area that we're proposing to change, as also requested by council back in March, is to add this area in the Okana, Okana area, Kana area. Mayor, what what is it? Mayor Mayor Brown, Okana area?
It's Okana. I said it's like a can of tuna.
Okay. Okay, well, this area here that is shown in the red stripe pattern and on the far left side of the screen is about a one-point-two-square-mile area, which includes the new Liberty Park School complex that they're constructing right now. So we at y'all's request, we added that and some of the surrounding areas that were likely to urbanize in the next twenty years. And then also what we've identified, and you have passed a resolution already earlier this summer because it is a resolution only between two local governments, and it didn't affect the county or any other local governments, is between Galatin and Hendersonville. It's the area in orange there on Big Station Camp Boulevard, where Hendersonville is has seeded or will seed upon approval of the local government planning advisory committee at the state, that area in orange to the city of Galatin, and there effectively move our urban growth boundary to match that red line. Likewise, the city would then give up a very narrow strip of land, which is really the private road that goes from Big Station Camp Boulevard to Lower Station Camp Boulevard in the area where the Rogers Quarry operation is. It's a private road. And also give up that portion of property on the extreme west end of the city, on the north side of the railroad tracks that is shown in yellow on this map from it shoots lanes area and north of the railroad track, which includes both sides of Highway three eighty-six, which all the adjacent properties there are in Hendersonville. To get to this property right now, or at least to get to that portion of the property that's on the west side of Highway three eighty-six, you have to physically go into Hendersonville, get off on the exit at Saundersville Road, and then double back to get into that portion of the property. And then, of course, you can't cross the railroad tracks, so you can't get into the portion east of of three eighty-six until you unless you go back into Hendersonville as well. So those were the trade-offs, if you will, to kind of clean up that boundary. This does expand our urban growth boundary. One thing that I did is trying to rack my brain, trying to fit a population number, which we project about almost just shy of seventy thousand people would live in the urban growth boundary in two thousand and forty, and set almost fifty-nine thousand of those people would live in the city of Galatin, and that would include getting additional annexation most likely. So the most of the properties that are outside the city of Galatin would probably not change a whole lot. The county does have what they call rural residential zoning. They passed a new zoning ordinance this summer, which rescinded the city zoning authority in the planning region, and then established their own zoning, not only in the planning region, but also in the other areas within the urban growth boundary. That zoning allows for one-acre lots. And many of those lots, if not all of them, will probably end up being built on with sewer systems. And probably the the bigger tracts of land that you see out there, the ones more likely to be subdivided into those one-acre lots, the smaller lots quite unlikely that they'll be further subdivided. It could be, but not as likely as the larger tracts. So there'll be about a about eleven or so thousand the population in our urban growth boundary will be outside our city limits. One thing that also was able to determine is, of course, we'll have plenty of lands unless we have some substantial rezonings within various residential classifications to accommodate that population. One thing that we do need to look at, and Mr. Fenton might want to speak about this, is to meet the same ratio of industrial lands to the population in Galatin. We're going to need a substantial amount of additional industrial lands. We just don't have a lot of larger tract industrial lands available. We have a lot of smaller ones, and they have limited use for larger employers. So that is one thing that we really need to focus our efforts on, particularly with the comprehensive plan. So this is a brief report. It's a summary report. We will have a final report to you.
Mike?
We'll have a
Go ahead and add to that conversation. Yes, the city has exactly thirty-four acres left that they have under control. And as you know, that having acreage under control is zoned appropriately is vital to continued growth for the industrial industry. As you all adopted the plan in two thousand and seventeen, that we're heading towards technology and technology-related industries, the grabbing industrial property is probably kind of slowing down on our list. We do have some opportunities to come up with some larger chunks of land that are business parks, and I think that's the direction that this city needs to be going as we move forward. As I mentioned, and my the chair of my board mentioned, will be coming to you probably for funding for some of those. But as as Mr. McCord indicates, additional industrial property is important for us to keep a balance in our economy. And I think we're looking south of the city at this point in time for that.
James, how many acres did you say we had left on the industrial?
We have thirty-four acres left, and there's a first right of refusal already on top of that piece of property.
Okay. Bill, can I ask you? I need to ask you a question if I can.
Sure.
Okay. Can you point out where Jack Anderson's school is located at?
I'm not sure if my cursor works on your map there, but it is located in Hendersonville on the west side of Shoots Lane at the extreme southwest corner of our urban growth boundary and our city limits.
Okay, I know.
Do I have the building to share my map, my screen?
Let me turn mine off, and you have one?
Yeah.
Okay, I'm gonna. I think I've just turned mine off, hopefully. Do I have it off?
No, it's still on.
You're still on, yeah.
There you go.
Okay. So go ahead, James, and you can share your screen.
All right. Mr. Fennell.
I see it.
This is Shoot Lane right here. Here's Jack Anderson Elementary, right here on this part of the property.
Okay, I just knew I knew there's a lot of residential when you pass Jack Anderson to the left going towards the lake.
Yes.
That's that's out of that's out of our growth boundary right there.
Correct. Our this so Shoot Lane is the southernmost, westernmost edge of our boundaries, and the the portion of property that Mr. McCord was talking about that we're needing to see most likely to Hendersonville is this area right here, as well as some of this area over here.
Okay.
All right.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Bill?
Yes, ma'am.
Do I understand it right, that other than those two changes which were added, everything else is the way that it has that it has been in the past?
That's right. Again, the red line is symbolizes the urban growth boundary. So this adding the Okana area, Kana area, and these other little smaller swaps really only increases the size of our urban growth boundary by less than two percent.
Yeah, thank you.
Relatively is in the whole scheme of things, it's relatively small. Now, now, this is a map here that I wanted to show you. I think I showed you this before. This was the original boundary that was adopted back in two thousand, and some of the other cities are considering some changes to their urban growth boundary, most significantly Portland, and they are looking to remove the northerly portion of their urban growth boundary and add a comparable size to the southern portion closer to Galatin there at the top of the ridge. Hendersonville has a very small minor, they're actually retracting their urban growth boundary a little bit and seeding it to parts of Goodlettsville. So they are giving up the extreme northwest portion of their urban growth boundary to Goodlettsville and adding a very small parcel adjacent to Long Hallup Pike. And so the other cities haven't indicated that they had a desire to change theirs, and I haven't heard what the county is going to do about theirs. They have a rural area and a planned growth area. The planned growth area, which is kind of a swath of lands that are shown in the white pattern here, and the rural areas were those in the the green area. So they may have some significant changes. Again, all their whole county is, for the most part, zoned for one-acre lots. Now, the next part here, and I'll try to go through this quickly, is if you authorize us to move forward with this, these are the main things in the process that will follow. We're gonna possibly de-annex a portion of that property that we will remove from our urban growth boundary upon approval by the local government planning advisory committee. Well, the the final report will be available to you at the public hearing that we're going to schedule, or the statute requires us to have two public hearings. And so we're targeting the council meetings in January for those meetings to take public comment formally on the proposed changes. We'll transmit that through an ordinance to the coordinating committee at the county level, which is a statutorily identified group of folks, including city representatives, utility, whoops, utility representatives and school board and so forth. And that coordinating committee that will then get together and review each of these proposals from all the cities in the county, and they may make some suggestions that would then come back to the city for consideration. They have a limited time to do that, a hundred and twenty days, but then the city can then therefore ratify or approve a growth plan that's acceptable to the coordinating committee. That that recommendation from the coordinating committee then goes to the local government planning advisory committee at the state level, Department of Economic and Community Development, who would then essentially have the final say, and I don't think that they would oppose that, but that would be their case to then make the final decision. And once that's done, we have a new growth map for twenty years. So any other questions on that?
Good job, Bill. Thanks.
Yeah, thank you, Bill.
Thanks, Bill.
All right, thank y'all.
Thank you, Bill. Do we need to move this on to the council?
No.
Just the presentation.
All right.
Yeah, I will. I will be taking it to council in January. There'll be a public hearing. There'll be two public hearings in January that y'all will conduct, so.
All right, move on to item number five. This is a resolution R two, zero, one, two, dash, six, five, in support of a SIA grant for previous to three intersections for access to the Galtin District Industrial Park. Mr. Tuttle.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Camp. Again, this is Nick Tuttle, the city engineer. And I know Mr. Fenton with the Economic Development Agency wanted to speak for a few minutes about this item as well. I know everyone's aware that the Facebook development has started construction. Prior to that, we worked very closely with them to to take a look at the impact that the traffic for not only their development, but future developments in the area would would have on the roadway. And Facebook folks were very gracious in helping to provide a study that that actually ended up making several recommendations on intersections that were pretty far away from their site. And in that study, they made some recommendations for improvements to three intersections along Airport Road, starting from the north at Highway thirty-one E, and then on down to Gateway Drive, and then finally to Hartful Pike, again, all three intersection on the Airport Road. And so we began working with TDOT and and to see if there would be any opportunity for grant funding through the State Industrial Access Program, which we've worked with TDOT on a number of occasions. Most recently, you all recall recall the Airport Road improvements, where we widened to three lanes and shifted away to expand for the airport. And then also within the industrial park itself, where we extended Gateway Drive twice and and made a connection there in and around the Beretta site. And so with the advice of the the folks at TDOT, and I'll I'll pull up, let me let me share my screen with you all, and I want to show you guys the intersection improvements that are being proposed. You know, work again, working with TDOT. This is the the intersection of Highway thirty-one E and Airport Road, and the the proposal is to add a right turn lane on thirty-one E, turning from Highway thirty-one E to Airport Road, and to also extend the existing right turn lane on Airport Road to make a right turn from Airport Road onto Highway thirty-one E. And so that's the first intersection. The second intersection is on Airport Road at Gateway Drive. And the proposal here is to actually signalize this intersection. The Facebook study showed that this this signal is actually already warranted. And and so this SIA grant would add that traffic signal and would also add a right turn lane on the shoulder that is existing on Airport Road. Just as you see here, most of the other improvements to this intersection have already been made. And then finally, the last intersection that is being proposed to have some improvements made is at Hartful Pike and Airport Road. And from from Hartful Pike heading into town westbound there, there is an addition of a right turn lane that would go from Hartful Pike on to Airport Road. And then on the south side of that intersection, the proposal is to extend the right turn lane from Airport Road, turning right on to Hartful Pike. And so all those improvements are proposed to be funded almost one hundred percent. TDOT has done the the estimates, and the the way the SIA program works, no matter if they got the estimate correct or not, they'll cover the cost. The only thing that the city would be on the hook for is anything that has to do with The only thing that the city would be, um, on the hook for, uh, is anything that has to do with right-of-way acquisition. And then, uh, if there are existing utilities that are within the right-of-way and that need to be relocated, uh, then, um, our utility department, um, just like they do on any other roadway project, would have to, um, to provide a plan to, uh, move those to accommodate the roadway expansion. Now, we have worked with, um, GPU in the past, most recently, um, at the intersection of, of Gateway Drive and, and Airport Road to try to avoid those types of, um, uh, relocations for utilities and, and we would do that again here, um, doing, um, everything we could to allow GPU to, to not have to, uh, spend any extra dollars that, um, if, if the project can be accommodating, uh, to those existing, uh, utilities. Um, I know here at this intersection in particular, uh, that, um, that there are some, um, main lines, uh, utility lines that, uh, are, are very close to the roadway and, uh, just like we, uh, worked with, uh, GPU at the intersection of Gateway Drive. Um, and so, um, I'm optimistic that we can, um, avoid, uh, a lot of the conflicts, but, um, I, I know we can't guarantee that for sure. Um, right now, the estimation, um, for the city's, uh, share is, um, is right around $35,000 to $40,000 um, uh, for, for all three of these projects combined. Uh, and so, uh, we won't know that number until, uh, later on, but, um, that would be the amount of money that TDOT would be looking for us to deposit with them, probably within the next six months. And, um, that's really, in, in, in my opinion, um, this, this is a no-brainer, uh, for the city of Galveston to make these applications for SIA, uh, grants, uh, to, to see. There will be a couple of million dollars worth of improvements, uh, for about $35,000. Uh, and so, uh, I'll, I'll turn it over to James, um, with the recommendation that, um, that we move forward with this application.
Just supporting what has been shared with us by Nick, this was partially driven by the Facebook, but it's also driven by Archer data centers locating their DNS industries, Boise Cascade located on Airport Road, Regenesis. Yap has doubled their, um, employment in the last six months. There's a lot of other stuff that's going on out there that is also supporting this. So, um, hopefully, uh, this body will fully support this. Thank you.
Vice Mayor, mo- motion to move the resolution on the council.
Second.
I'll second.
Grabbing the most in the seconds, are there any discussion? Give us roll call vote, please, Connie.
Hey. Vice Mayor Camp?
Yeah.
Councilman Alexander?
Yes.
Councilman Fan?
Yeah.
Councilman Fennell?
Yes.
Councilman Hayes?
Yes.
Councilwoman Love?
Yes.
And Councilman Overton?
Yes.
Vote is seven eyes, zero nays.
Thank you, Connie. We move on to item number seven. I'll take the item number six, discussion, uh, discussion of dates for the 2021 House Committee meetings and council work sessions. Mayor Brown.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Camp. In your packet, you will see the proposed dates for the, um, 21 schedule of meetings and work sessions. You'll also see the official holidays for the city of Galveston. Um, I do need, or I would like to ask that you move this on to council to approve these dates.
Most approved.
Have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All in favor? Connie, do roll call vote.
Vice Mayor Camp?
Yeah.
Councilman Alexander?
Oh, yeah.
Councilman Hayes?
Yeah.
Councilman Fan?
Yeah.
Councilman Fennell?
Yes.
Councilwoman Love?
Yes.
Councilman Overton?
Yes.
Seven eyes, zero nays.
Thank you, Connie. Well, next agenda of the item is discussion of Galveston Public Works Utilities Superintendent. Mayor Brown.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Camp. Um, I did want to discuss with this body and try and ascertain what your will is, um, as to how you want to proceed with the filling of this position. Um, it won't be very long till we're saying a very sad goodbye to Mr. Gregory. And, um, I know that last week you had the opportunity to interview two candidates that were recommended by the expert committee that vetted the candidates. Um, as I let you know, we have left the position open. Um, it is my understanding from our HR director that we've had two other candidates that, um, have applied that may be good candidates. They're both candidates from the West Coast. Um, certainly, you know, that's a consideration, um, when we look realistically at the salary demands of a West Coast candidate and of course, the, the distance and, and the relocation and the consideration of hiring someone, um, that's not familiar with this area. I am certainly inserting my personal opinions. I don't mean to do that so much. So anyway, I would turn it over to you guys to discuss how you want to move forward. Um, I don't know if there is a will to go ahead and, um, hire one of the candidates that you have interviewed. If so, um, I would suggest that we have a special called meeting to try and do that before the end of the year. If you want to continue to keep the position open, we need to let our HR director know that. Um, but we do need to make some plans for moving forward since we hire this as a body.
Move these too long. Just vote them up or down.
Yes, that, that was kind of my thought. I want, uh, just to close on the two that we had already interviewed. That's my opinion.
It up to us or to the experts to recommend one of the two?
I think there is, um, an expert recommendation. Connie, would it be appropriate to show that if, or share that at this point? Or would you do that if we were to move forward and vote on them? What is, what is the best way to handle that, do you think? Not to put you on the spot, Ms. Flood.
That's okay. Um, you, the, the processes, the experts have to, uh, give an opinion and they did share, uh, that with me. So if you'd like to hear that tonight, I, I, I can, uh, let you all know that. Um.
I would like to hear it.
Okay.
Um, may I interject and just for, um, um, just for, rather than use names, I'm going to ask that you say internal candidate, external candidate.
Um, at the end of discussions, uh, with the panel, they were looking at our internal candidate.
That was the candidate they were most supportive of.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
There, so let's put it on, let's put a, a special, um, meeting on and let's vote it up or down and move on.
Agree.
Okay, um, and then our option would be on a special called meeting. I think the best option would be to hold it next Tuesday at our regular time. And if we do have a special called meeting, I would ask that you add the item to the agenda that you voted on last week on first reading about the, um, employee benefits dollars, just so we can get that completed before the end of this year. Um, I'm asking that because you know, we have to note exactly what the special called meeting is for.
I agree, two items on there.
So, Mr. Camp, I guess I turn it back to you at this point.
Yeah, we've got a motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
Yes, I will just reiterate what the mayor said. If we have a special called meeting, we have to be very specific in our notice as to what we are going, what you're going to discuss. No other items can be discussed at that meeting and we will need to get notice out and I will work with the mayor to make sure that is done properly. We have missed the deadline to get it in the newspaper. That is not necessarily, um, detrimental to holding it next Tuesday night. I just want to point that out, but we can, uh, let the public know tonight and then we'll do lots of postings.
Sounds good.
So we voted on the two item for next Tuesday. Then what we vote on this camp, Vice Mayor?
Yes. This is special call meeting, right? Two items on special call meeting.
And Vice Mayor Camp, who made the second?
Linda Love.
I thought it was Councilman Alexander.
I thought it was Ms. Love.
It was.
It's love made it second on.
I did.
No, I did, but it doesn't really matter.
I thought it was Councilman.
So, what day will the second call meeting? I'm sorry, I didn't catch it.
Let's do Tuesday, the 15th at 6:00 PM. That's unless y'all want to do something alternative, I'm.
Is that our regular meeting or do we have a net regular meeting next week?
We do not. I thought we had another meeting this month, but we do not. So that's where we are. So.
Oh, Steve, I have one more meeting.
Two now.
Now, you, now, this would have been our last meeting of the year.
Well, I say we have a special call meeting. I have that one and then, uh, January the 5th, when I get to go off.
Oh, 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 yes, exactly, exactly, exactly.
Okay. All right. Any other questions? Do a roll call vote, please, Connie.
Vice Mayor Camp?
Yeah.
Councilman Alexander?
Yes.
Councilman Fan?
Yeah.
Councilman Fennell?
Yes.
Councilman Hayes?
Yes.
Councilwoman Love?
Yes.
And Councilman Overton?
Yes.
Seven eyes, zero nays.
Thank you. Thank you, thank you. Okay, last item on the agenda is a discussion of the Galveston Department of Electricity and Power, but Mayor Brown.
And there's really not a lot to discuss with this. I just want to let you all know that, um, I have, um, with the passing of, um, one of our board members sadly recently, Mr. Bennett, um, we are going to have to appoint someone new to that board. I wanted to, um, do it by the January meeting and so I wanted to make you aware that I will be bringing forth a name, um, in January. I don't think I'll actually make their first meeting, but still with the, if, with the support of the council at the work session, that person should be able to attend that meeting and then at least get familiar. Um, have met with Mr. Kimball. We do have a list of potential candidates, um, but certainly people who are interested can submit, um, their resume still. It's a good time to remind people there is a portal on our Galveston website, galvestonttn.gov where you can submit your um, to serve on any board. You just submit your information and upload a resume and tell us what boards you're interested in serving on. We maintain a list that way. So that's it.
Thank you, Mayor. That ends our, uh, agenda for tonight. We'll move on to other business. Is there any other business?
I do want.
Go ahead.
I may, thank you. Um, I do want to, um, address with this body kind of the unknowns that January is going to present. It's probably going to be quite fluid. Um, as you know, the executive orders to continue virtual meetings are only through the end of this year. So, um, I don't know if it's proper at this time for this board to say if the governor were to extend those orders, then we would do this. Um, I'm particularly challenged because we will have swearing, a swearing in at the very first meeting. I'm also very challenged because we really want to have a going away reception for Vice Mayor Camp, but I don't know. It may have to be one of those things that we do, um, once the COVID threat has finally gone away from our community. Um.
Mayor, I was watching the Hendersonville Board of Magistrates discuss this on TV the other night and they called for just a special short swearing in meeting and the rest of them are virtual. Just as a suggestion.
I am, um, supportive and will make provisions, um, as much as we possibly can for however you wish to do this.
It's hard to know right now what the governor's going to say.
So, are you wanting us to say, are you wanting us to make a motion and decide if we want to still hold them virtual if the governor allows us to do that? Is that what you want us to do?
I guess that would be probably the, um, I mean, if that's what you all want to do. Um, certainly if we have a swearing in, we could have the members being sworn in. They could actually be here and we could make that happen. Um. And then everyone else could attend virtually if they so desired, or we could all start meeting again in person. It's up to y'all.
I'd like, I think we should keep on virtually really because the numbers are just going up. But I feel like, I feel like the governor's going to extend that.
I do want to just interject that if we have a swearing in, that will be a public meeting. I don't think you can say only these people can attend, that it would be open to the public.
With, uh, with the six-foot, uh, distance, maybe a first come, first served.
Mayor, can't you do a swearing in before the meeting?
Ms. McCully? I don't know.
Swear them in whenever they want to swear them in after that time, right, Susan?
I, I believe our, I'll have to look at the charter. I think it says it has to be at the first meeting. So I don't think it can be before the meeting.
That's what we've always done at first meeting.
Well, I think that we could have, I mean, we could make it a public meeting, but we could still have the virtual option. Um, and those of you who want to attend virtually may and those of you who, um, don't, um, that, that do want to be here can be here. Here's a question for you, Susan. Can they be s- sworn in virtually? I'll use Ms. Love as an example. She will be re-sworn in in January. Can that be done virtually? Or does she have to be in person swearing on the Bible with the person swearing her in?
There's been a lot of discussion about that amongst, uh, our attorney groups and we do think so. We're waiting on M Task to give us some direction on that, but we think that there will be ways that that will be allowed to occur because of the pandemic.
Okay, so I think the best course at this point for, would be for the council to make provisional decision to, whether or not to continue virtually based on orders that might come between now and the end of the year.
I don't care. I'll do it either way.
I think we need to do it virtual, like Linda said.
I'm, I'm fine with what Ms. Love and Greg said.
Well, I'm fine to do it virtual. I don't really care.
I don't either.
Do you want Vice Mayor Camp to take a vote on that?
He wants to.
I think it'd be appropriate.
And what we voted on?
To do them virtually.
Okay, the, the swearing in of the first meeting, same thing.
Well.
Because that's when we did swearing in at first meeting.
Yeah, from now on until the governor says no, yeah. If he says yes, then we can do it, we'll do it.
Susan, can we make a binding vote on a committee meeting?
Well, this is, this is just to give, um, the public notice of what we're going to do and then what we would need to, this is just to give the mayor direction. I think the mayor has the ability to make that call and then we would include in our notice, um, for the meeting, whether it's going to be virtual or live.
Yeah, and we voted each meeting essentially whether or not to conduct the meeting electronically.
Connie, give us roll call vote, please.
I'm lost.
Okay, Vice Mayor Camp?
Well, since this doesn't affect me, I'll abstain.
I'm not sure if I understand. Are we voting?
I don't either.
Yes, to.
To do it virtually.
So that would be.
Virtually if the governor allows it.
Okay.
So, does that have anything to do with swearing in as well?
We, we will get the update on how that is done once the, once M Task gives guidance to the municipalities on how we might properly do that. And then I'm anticipating that people will have the option whether or not to be sworn in virtually or in person upstairs in chambers.
All right, Connie, you want to continue with the vote now?
Okay, Councilman Alexander?
Mud is water, yes.
Councilman Fan? Councilman Fennell?
Yes.
Councilman Hayes?
Yes.
Councilwoman Love?
Yes.
And Councilman Overton?
Yes.
Six eyes, one of, six nays and one abstention.
Thank you, Connie. Is there any other business?
I have one, two, three, two.
Mr. Alexander?
Okay, uh, first of all, I, I just want to, uh, let everyone know about the passing of Mr. Jamie Austin, which I'm sure most of you heard. His funeral will be this coming Saturday. Uh, make sure you keep him in your prayers and also, uh, Mr. Al Bennett's wife, Miss Lady Lou, please keep her in your prayers, uh, prayers during this holiday season. Uh, and also on Christmas Eve at noon, my wife and I will continue to do the traditional thing that we have done for a number of years and that's giving out groceries and fruit, uh, at our house. So if anyone does need, uh, you don't have to be in the fifth district, just anyone. So if anyone does in need, you don't have to be in the fifth district, just anyone for any military family that may need some grocery or fruit, come by seven eighty Anthony Street in Gallatin on Christmas Eve at noon. Tradition, a holiday that my wife and I and friends do all do every year. That's all I have.
Can I get some bread?
You can get some bread, but you can't get no chicken.
You gonna have fried chicken?
No.
Is there any other business? Would you want to say something, Linda?
I just was saying John D. is a good guy, good man.
Thank you.
John, if if you come by my business tomorrow sometime, I'll give you a donation of, I'll spread some more around.
Okay, pick up some chickens, okay.
Any other business come for the council? Do we have any department reports? If not, without objection, we'll stand adjourned.
I think I think Mr. McCord had something.
I had something brief and I will be brief. I just wanted to remind you that we will have our one-on-one meetings. If you haven't already been scheduled, somebody from our office will be calling you to schedule a meeting. These one-on-one meetings are between also the council members and the planning commissioners, where the staff and GNRC staff who is working to develop the comp plan will be discussing the conceptual ideas or that we're kicking around at least to determine what future land uses might be appropriate for various areas and describe the methodology and typology of those land uses and how they might appear on a map. So this is your opportunity to ask questions about what types of land uses that you either like about what we have or what you'd like to see changed. And those areas, particularly those areas that are not already developed and what types of new development you think would be appropriate for those areas and what kind of redevelopment, if you want to go that route, are appropriate in certain areas. So some of you I know have already been contacted and we already have meetings scheduled with you. But be on the lookout for that. Also, the state of Tennessee, TDOT, Department of Transportation has put out a call for urban transportation planning grant. And they need to know by January fifteenth whether local governments are interested in submitting a letter of intent to submit those grants. And so the grant is for two hundred thousand dollars and there is a ten percent local match. The idea that I wanted to share with you is, and I've talked with a few of the other planning directors in the other cities and the and the county, is that we would file a joint application on behalf of the county and all the cities in the county for that two hundred thousand dollar grant. There's a ten percent match, so it would be twenty thousand that would be split. I suppose it would be split based on population of each of the participants. So I would think that our participation level would be no more than, say, around six thousand dollars based on our share of this county's population. What we would like to do is submit a grant to have a master bike pedestrian study done and a plan for all of the county. So include the cities and the county. Hendersonville, Gallatin, Portland, White House and so forth, and the county to do that countywide bike plan. But I'd like to get y'all's thoughts on that and I can share those back with the other planners in the in the city. But either way, we need to provide some essentially a scope if and a letter of intent to make application. The application will come a little bit later. But I just wanted to put that in front of you so you might be able to dwell on whether or not you want to participate in that and and provide the local match. So.
Yeah, I think it'd be good if that's all it's going to cost us. I mean, I think it's a good deal. A lot of people ride bicycles, so.
We'd be walking pedestrian and bicycle facilities.
Yeah, I'm just saying, there's a lot of exercise. So if that's all it costs us, I'll say we'll move forward with it.
Thank you, Mr. McCord. Do we need to send that on to council? Ms. McCord, does I need to go to council to apply for this or this this for information only? Yeah, McCord.
I can prepare a resolution for the first council meeting in January of supporting making the application and providing the local match. I think that would be fine.
Watch the wheel of the council.
Go for it.
You don't need to come before a work session anymore. Ms. McCord.
Well, you can vote on it now to take it to the first council meeting in January and then move on.
Okay.
Motion submitted to council.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion submitted to council in a second. Any discussion? Connie, you want to do a roll call vote?
Hey, Vice Mayor Camp. Councilman Alexander.
Yes.
Councilman Fan.
Yes.
Councilman Fennell.
Yes.
Councilman Hayes.
Hello.
He left, okay. Councilwoman Love.
Yes.
Councilman Overton.
Yes.
Six eyes, zero nays.
Thank you, Connie. Is there any other department is wishing to speak? All right, without objection, we will adjourn then. Good night, people.
Bye, y'all. Be careful.
Good night.